My pledge is to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, after our meeting today, we had an executive session that where we were discussing contractual issues. If everybody, as I am doing now, please turn off or mute your electronic devices at this point. We'll move on to world politics.
Mr. Panti.
Here.
Mrs. Ecker.
Here.
Ms. Hines.
Here.
Mrs. Moretti.
Here.
Mrs. Folowich.
Here.
Mr. Paulick.
He's joining us virtually.
Okay. Mrs. Rinaldi.
Here.
Ms. Sarno.
Here.
Mr. Plino.
Here.
Nine present.
There, if you haven't, you, and you can hear us, you'll have to unmute yourself to, so we can hear you if you have any questions or anything, comments. Thanks. At this point, we'll open the floor to audience comments on any of the agenda items. If we have any audience members, come on up, state your name, where you live, and put your comments up.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Sarah, I thought I knew what I was talking about when I came in here, and then I found out that maybe not. Is the field a go up by the school, the football field?
As far as a contract?
Like, are we putting a football field at the soccer field?
We're putting a multi-use field in that will cover track, soccer, football, the ability to play on that field, any of the other field sports that we would have.
Okay.
That's what we'll be actually voting on.
Right, okay, so maybe I should talk at the end. Anyway, my point is this, if the, I assumed by the newspaper article that it was going in.
I didn't read it, I'm sorry.
It's been.
Wow.
Yeah, about three weeks.
Okay.
And they, you said something about a pond, you have to put a pond in.
It's a water retention.
Correct.
Section there that would, what the engineers decided was, instead of having a field that would be like a normal field where you let the water work itself down into the ground, that there would be an imper- permeable surface put down so that the water that landed on the field would not go into the ground.
Correct.
And that would be worked out, I think we'd go into the pond so that it meets the standards for letting that water into the drainage systems down through the creeks and things like that. So there's, it's, it's not a pond, it's going to be a standing pond, but it's a area where that water goes first before it's distributed into the, you know, into the natural flow of the water in the systems.
So it's not a pond, like you see, like, say, for example, up the mall, back in the corner where the water accumulates if it's an overabundance of runoff?
It, that, if it's working correctly, it fills up during the rain, but then it slowly works itself out rather than all at once.
And I don't know the boundaries of the school property, where would that be?
It's going to be on the lower end of. We can hear you, Larry.
He's not getting sound on your end.
We can hear you.
So, it's on the lower end of the field, the field had been redesigned, we do have some drawings and everything that, you know, we can make available for you, for you to look at.
Okay.
It would be at the end opposite of the big softball field.
Correct.
On the lower.
On the lower end, like down by the pool side. Springdale pool side, yeah, okay. Now, would someone monitor that? Like, to make sure that it's properly doing its job, that there's not bugs or mosquitoes accumulating and things of that nature? Or is it just kind of put in and forgot about?
Well, I think that would be part of the regular maintenance if you have a baller facilities. A lot of places have those, those type of systems put in, if you go down the sheets, they have one at the end, you know, up here we have one under our, it's underneath the pavement, so it's enclosed. But any of the general maintenance would be done by our, our own.
Someone would be.
Yeah, obviously, if there was something that's not functional on it, we would go back to the contractors, etc.
Now, moving forward, assuming that the field is going in up there, how, how far have you thought forward on that? Are you talk, do you have a idea of grandstands, parking?
We, we haven't gone into any details beyond getting the, the field done because it needed to be done for soccer and getting our home games back in town. We have multiple options yet that need to be explored, that, you know, we're trying to make decisions as we're going along, we, there's certain decisions we had to make to make sure that our home games are here as soon as possible. Hopefully, everything from track to football and soccer all can be played at home, but there's timeline crunches on that, and that's kind of was the priority. We still have a lot of evaluations to do going forward on what our options are.
Because that's, that's would be a lot of my next questions, you know, if you're moving forward on the football field being moved up to the school, have you considered, and basically, like I said, I, I thought this was further along than it was. I thought, the impression I got the last time I was here was that it was a done deal, that you were moving forward on putting the field up at the high school, which is, if that's what you're going to do.
A field.
Well, I, I took it as football field, like, in other words, I made a couple.
We're not doing it because of football.
I understand that, you know, because of the soccer field needs done and the tracks, it's just wear and tear.
Right.
But if the football field does go up there.
You go right ahead.
Are they, are you thinking, have you considered changing faci- changing facilities? The grandstands, parking, we're getting.
Larry, can you mute yourself for a second here until she's done, we're getting feedback from you. Thank you.
Like, check.
So, or just turn the volume completely down.
We're getting, I don't know, like, yeah, we're getting their feedback.
Beating into my time.
Take a deep breath, you have all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no, anything beyond getting this field in place as soon as possible has not been determined, nothing else has been determined.
But if you do, if your objective is to have the, the home games.
Right.
Back in town, okay?
This year.
This year?
Yeah.
And you're putting all that money into that field.
Which was going to be put into the field.
Justifiably.
Yeah.
Because it's soccer, it's soccer mom, okay? Maybe then the better question would be, do you have an idea when you might make that decision? And, because you don't have a lot of time between now and fall, okay? So these things that I was thinking about, should, if you're leaning towards that, need to be addressed? And my question is, I have a list here of things that I would, was gonna ask if you have thought about, but apparently, you're not that far yet, so.
I think everybody's had different ideas in their minds, we just haven't, what we did not want to do was slow down the decision of what you're talking about, having that slow the field down. The priority was to get this field done if, if at all possible for fall sports, and not let anything else affect that. We want them to play in Springdale, their home games, we want soccer out here at home games, that was our priority, nothing else, you know, we have, we have to make those other decisions. But in doing some of those other decisions, okay, there's a lot of other things that need to be taken into consideration and a lot of other time that would have to be spent. Which means, if we try to do a whole-blown, you know, facility up there, number one, we'd have to decide whether we wanted to do it up there or whether we wanted to do something down below, how are we going to do it? How much time, we would never have the field done in time. All we did was that the priority for us was to get a functional field back in Springdale, up, up at the high school, so that whatever other decisions we're making, those kids are playing at home. Because I, I went through it my senior year, two, junior and senior year, we played away, never got to play a home game. I don't want the other, or any, any more of the kids to have to go through that.
I agree.
So that was the priority, no other decisions, we're going to slow that down, and if we start talking about other aspects of what we want to do and where we want to go, that project would never have happened, simple as that.
Well, it's, I'm just trying to.
Doesn't mean that there hasn't been discussions about other things, but there's nothing that's, and we're still gathering a lot of information and trying to find out information, we're in that, we have to gather that information together.
Well, if you just, whatever you decide, see, it's hard to, I understand you wanted the field done, and that will just get done in time, I think, for the fall season, correct?
Everything just starts alike.
So, you're going to have to make a decision before the summer to decide where you're going to play your football games, your home football games.
Before this, this summer?
Like, before this, when do you make decisions with other schools about your?
I mean, I mean, as soon as we know, we're, we're, we're moving ahead, I think that we've decided with track because we're not sure that the track would be there, there may be, we may have to play those games away this year. But there's a possibility that they can be, but it depends on the weather, it depends on all kind of factors. And again, we're trying to, you know, do multiple things at one time, and we're just trying to make sure that home games will be played here, and we have a pretty good commitment. If that doesn't happen, what we'll do is end up playing at their fields, our home games at the, the other fields.
I understand, but, but what I'm getting at is, I think you have a very limited timeframe to make the decision as to where you're going to play these games.
I understand what you're saying, you basically want to know if we're playing football up there.
No, no, not necessarily.
That's what I'm getting out of here.
No, Mr. Plino is, is saying.
But, we can't tell you absolutely we're going to play there is what we're trying to say, we are making every effort to play this fall. But if you're asking for us to tell you whether we're going to play there, and we can't do that, and we know there's time, there's time commitments. I mean, I, you're not giving her an answer, and I think that's what she wants to know, are we?
No, that's not what I'm asking. You're implying, you're implying, correct me, hey, you said that they're going to play at home, someplace, either up on the hill or down at the Vets.
No, I didn't say down at the Vets, I said, our intent is to play our home games in Springdale, at that field, that field will be ready.
Okay, all right, let me move forward then. Let me move forward with my comments then, if you're going to play the games, home games, at that field, long time to get there. Have you considered, or things you need to consider, which I'm sure you're aware of because you've played, changing facilities, grandstands, where are the buses going to park, where's parking going to be? There's no sidewalks up there, there's no lights up there for parking on the streets as there was down below. You're going to have, I, is, I'm assuming Desmond Field is part of the borough's property? Yes. I think Desmond Field is borough property, right? So you can't park on that. If you do have the games up there, are the police going to be patrolling the streets because you have people in from out of town, new part of the neighborhood where people are parking, strangers in and out of town, you know how people are, they get nervous? Plus, you're going to have to have, like, if I'm not mistaken, I, I don't know if it's a tale, but you have to have a township police officer for the field and a borough police officer outside of the field?
Those are things that the administration would work for.
And then, you know, so that's, plus more officers, I don't know how many you normally had when it was at the Vets, but, but, you know, that's something to consider too. And then Ms. Sarno, at the last meeting I was at, and then I hadn't, I sent her an email outlining a lot of the safety issues that are up there right now as we speak. I invite each and every one of you to come and sit in my front yard for a soccer game, it is the most dangerous thing I have ever seen in my life. There's, the only car that should be inside that gate is an ambulance, there's all kind of coaches' cars, people are pulling in and out of that fence, it's right at the crest of the hill, there's no sign that there's a school there. Then they come and they turn into Highland and they drop people off, they're crossing the street right there because they don't want to walk the whole way in, it's dangerous. And that's not even considering a long, when you have basketball, when they're parking halfway out into the road and you have to go into the other lane to get around. I know that's not your problem, but maybe, you know, beat up the borough police a little bit about it, because it's very, very dangerous. And that safety, whether the field goes there or not, is, should be like the primary concern at that school. There's no signs, hardly any signs, that indicate that there's a school there, nothing blinking, there's a couple pedestrian signs, it's very dangerous. And then the fences within, I've yacked about that for a long time, if you're, you know, with this field, I hope, whether it plays up there or not, that the fences are repaired. Because the comment was made that they don't use the turnstiles because of handicap, we have a gate to open up for the handicap, the gates should be, should be, you paid all that money, make them work. All, a lot of them, if you walk through there, you can't even move them. And then, of course, if you did the, do this, does the district own the buildings at Vetsfield?
We don't, the Vet Field owns, that's it, I mean, Springdale owns Vetsfield.
I understand that the buildings that were built there, the dressing area, the concession stand.
Permanent fixtures on a piece of property.
So they belong to the borough? Oh, I wasn't under that impression.
Can't pick it up and take it away.
Didn't they say they wanted it back to original when they started, that we would have to tear it from?
That was like, yeah, fine print in the, like a little catch in the, in the.
I mean, if you have a bunch of those items like that.
I'll take them.
I, I would just submit them so that we can give you, I mean, answers, because again, I can't, we can't really answer a lot of them, a lot of them are things that are in the works. I don't know where they're at, that, without the athletic director being here, without the principal being here, so, we know that there's going to be issues that we need to deal with. And that's all part of things that we have in the queue to start discussing, but I would welcome having that, this.
If, if I may say something, Mrs. Watts, you said, like, you decided to put the field there, it wasn't only the nine board members, the administration, we were. Ugh, I don't even know what word to say, social media beat us up that our young men were not playing at home. So, the board in its best decision, trying to work with Springdale Borough, which led to where we are today, have this field that, you know, through guidance of the administration, you know, Mr. Plino's experience and that, were able to provide a field now for multi-sports up there. That will be the best for our young men and women that are playing on that field. The safety issues you're bringing up aren't going to change because they're already there with soccer, so are we adding things?
I wasn't implying that, I was just saying to.
But anyway, I want you to know, it wasn't just nine board members sitting in a room deciding to do this, it was the community was telling us, we want a facility for our athletes, and that's what the board is here to provide.
I understand your role, and I understand the position that you take, that's a discussion for another time, as to how it came about. But, the impression, as I said, as I got the last time I was here, was that you were moving forward with it, so you did move forward with the field. The impression that I got from the reading the newspaper, as I said, was that it was a done deal. So there's things that came to mind when, when I heard of that.
And we love.
And regardless of whether the football people stay there or not, you might play one up there and make up and go back or whatever.
Those are all options.
Sure, I get it, but like I told Ms. Sarno, regardless, I don't care what you do over there, it's a fiasco, and it's just not safe for the district. The whole, you could play badminton over there, it's still bad as far as safety is concerned. I have a really off-the-wall question, why do we pay Chessweek to play tennis in Chessweek, is that true?
They use that for the tennis, club or whatever, the tennis team use those facilities.
Why don't we have a tennis park?
Well, I think that was a decision that was made several years ago to, to do it there, that, that was one of the board decisions that were done in the past.
So that would have to be something that would be brought up again to change.
And again, that's part of our ongoing evaluation of all the things that we need to look at and prioritize within the district.
Okay, I have another question, if I may, is the district prepared to, you only receive less than 4% if I read it right, of federal funding? Less than 4%, it's not a lot, I don't.
We're getting on the agenda, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, it was, I was headed for education, towards education, there's something on the agenda that talks about education, a curriculum or something. My comment was getting to this, and then, and I, if I'm wrong, is it, there's something about curriculum on the agenda, right? I mean, am I out of place if I bring it up?
What, what's the question?
Well, I want to know with the, with the student teacher ratio, why Springdale isn't a blue ribbon school? In the past, there's been classes of 400 and, 245 students with less than 72 teachers through there. With that little ratio, we should be a school of excellence, spring, in, in the, in the whole static of, the population is becoming static, a lot of, Springdale isn't what it used to be, a lot of people aren't moving in. You know, the borough's struggling, and I just think that, you know, we should concentrate, there were a couple board members that said, all we want is the best for our kids, let's give them the best education possible.
And that's what we're trying to do, I, I, I think you have to apply for the blue ribbon thing, it's, it's an application whether you want to go after that or not, it's not, not something that they just look at every school district and say, you're blue ribbon.
I understand that, but we used to be a district that people would move into for the education.
Yeah, and I still think there's, that, that happens here when you have people, we have a different demographic, so, again, those are questions that, as far as that education, we're trying to provide the balance, the best education we can and improving at the funds that we have. That includes the athletic facilities as well as the education, we're constantly trying to improve, the ratios change from back when we were in school because the requirements are changing too with the.
Sure, I understand that, and technology and.
Everything, so, it's, again, it's, it's a constant battle that we, we, we fight here every day, I don't want to say fight, but we discuss every, every time we get together.
Maybe, you know, you had mentioned about the board, the, on Facebook, everybody fights their fight on Facebook, nobody comes to the need. And the thing is, is like, maybe for your own PR, if you put out more academic information, people won't get so angry at spending money on a field?
Reports all the time on academic achievements, we have students come here all the time.
That letter, yeah.
And people don't come or don't listen to our meetings, you know, they get excited over the same things, you know, sports and, you know, these things that, they're part of the district and all that, but, again, I don't even follow the Facebook stuff because.
Oh, I'm not on it, I don't even know.
It's usually not valid information, if you, that's why you're welcome to come here and ask questions.
But my initial thing was.
Curriculum committee meeting tomorrow night.
I'm sorry?
There's a curriculum committee meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 o'clock.
And you're welcome to attend that.
And that's here?
Yes.
And that's what, because you spoke at the last meeting I was at as well, and, you know, you had talked about accountability, I know I'm not supposed to talk to her, but accountability, you know, accountability for the students and everything, and I, I thought that was pretty admirable, you know, because all too often, you know, I've been in those shoes, you know, take the money and run a lot of times. And if the administration, and I'm not picking on you, but, you know, handling the, teaching stuff is like handling a bunch of kindergartners, you know, and it's just like, they need to sometimes be hold of signal.
Well, thank you for your questions, if there's anything else, again, please provide that, you know, again. Um, you know, again, there's time for, at the end of our meeting, to talk about some of the non-agenda items. And specifically when we're talking about agendas, whether there's questions you need to ask about specific questions that are.
Sure. And then the only thing that I was going to throw out there that I was, um, you know, with the dismantling the Department of Education, are we, are we prepared to absorb if that comes down the road, that it's funds for us?
That's something that, again, that has to come down through the state. We, we have regulations, we deal with things that's there.
Yeah.
Costs us.
I do have some information I'm going to be sharing.
Oh, good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other items that community members have about agenda items?
All right, seeing none, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, so, um, the first item we have here is the forming group. Um, they are going to review the masonry work at the junior, senior high school, as well as a junior, senior high school renovation project specific to Marshall auditoriums, lobby and restrooms. This was the colored packet you received on Tuesday. If you want to reference that, you can do so and it will also be projected up here on the screen.
Wow. Uh, thank you for having us here this evening. Um, we're going to, uh, as Dr. Grazek said, go over the two projects that we're working on for you, uh, bring you up to speed on them. I think you have the handout from the presentation we presented a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, we're going to present it again now for all of you. And, uh, I brought with me Doug Zanger, who is, um, vice president of operations of our construction management group. He is also a professional engineer. And, uh, he is, uh, in charge of the masonry project. So he will speak on that project first and go through, uh, the condition assessment and how he's approaching the retrofit of the exterior masonry. And then, uh, when he's complete, then I'll go over the lobby project and then I'll have a few other things to talk about.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So first, I'm going to briefly go through, probably as old news to you, but just in case, particularly for the audience, why this project is being done. Um, so at the high, junior, senior high school, there is problems with the masonry. And in particular, what you're seeing here is these large pieces are called cast stone. It's concrete, but they're made to look like stone. But they came loose, none had fallen, but they were looking like they were going to fall. So this is an example of some, I think it was done in 2024, some investigative work to look at the condition. And so what we have is various places where joints have opened up, the block has shifted. Under there, the degree of that shifting. These are, from the distance, you can't see too well, but getting close up, you can see more cracks at the entrance. And up high, along the side there, which is now all covered with plywood. Because we were concerned about something coming loose, so it's all covered with plywood to protect. So these are just examples. And this is all on the three additions that were done around 2012. So these are the three areas that we're working on. Classroom addition, cafeteria addition and multipurpose addition. And so with this, you see the color key code there. The project is essentially these, this cast stone, a number of locations where it goes all the way up to the roof, needs to be removed and replaced. And so that's what that orange colored areas are. And we have areas that it would be good to do, some is to clean and recaulk the joints. The caulking is something you do every 10 years, 15 years. It's a maintenance kind of thing, long-term maintenance, not something you do weekly or monthly or something like that. Cleaning the stone, that's more an aesthetic, that looks better. So we're going to have some new masonry. When we work, by the way, we're going to be replacing the cast stone with brick. It'll be less expensive and avoid the problems. Because if you look at these buildings, you can see where the brick was done, there are no problems. The cast stone was a problem. So we're solving the problem, not creating additional opportunity to spend money. We don't want to do that. So we have the orange is what must be done, the green is cleaning. And then the blue, which you don't even see on this sheet, it suddenly applies to the multipurpose addition, where there's a high band around the top near the roof that also could stand be cleaned. And I'll get to talking about how we're going to control the cost for this later. So again, the cafeteria addition, same sort of thing. And here, that little bit of orange is where it's just going to be, in that case, we're going to take the stones that are there and take them off and put them back in place because there's only two courses. They shifted a little bit, so that's just going to be to repair that and move on. Then the multipurpose addition at the entrance side is the only place that we're having the problems. And then you can see the blue band there. Yes. Along with cleaning or recaulking, we're recommending repointing. And if anybody doesn't know what repointing means, sometimes it's called tuck pointing. But the joints, sometimes the mortar wears out of it. And that lets water in, which contributes to deterioration. So there are places where that is very obviously needs to be done. Some places that it's not so bad, but then when you do some of it, then you see new mortar and old mortar. And so again, it becomes, uh, that you put the money into it and then it doesn't look that great afterwards. So that's another thing that we're recommending to be done is in these green areas is the repointing. Now the cost, obviously the concern. So we've broken this job into the three parts, matching the three colors. And there's our estimate for it. The idea is we would bid, the orange is the base bid, that's the work that must be done. The green is cleaning and repointing, caulking. That would be something that would be a bid alternate. And then the high cast stone cleaning, that's another bid alternate. So the board would have the opportunity to decide, given the bid, how they actually came in, whether or not to proceed with all of the work, some of the work or just the cast stone replacement.
I have a question about the green area, the cast stone, repoint and clean. If you have problems with the cast stone, why are we just repointing and cleaning that?
The green down low is not a problem. I've walked around the entire building, even the older areas. And from that, where that green goes to gray, is what's called a water table. There's a transition from brick and then cast stone. And those three or four courses of cast stone are in good shape. They're not separating, they're not falling apart, falling out or anything. It's just where it's gone narrow and all the way up to the roof is where there's been problems.
So I thought the green area was all brick, but there's.
No. No, that's, every colored area is cast stone. The gray is of the brick.
Ms. Mertie, are you referring to the replacement, brick being, the plates being replaced with brick?
Yes. And then like, you know, next to that is the word cast iron or cast. Give me my skillet.
The cast stone.
Stone, you know, if that is a problem, like, is that something we need to think? But what you're saying is it is not.
No. Now, the only places are these tall, narrow pieces going vertically.
All right, thank you.
Will the green and blue eventually be a problem?
I really don't think so. The blue is, is more of an aesthetic. It's up there high. Everything else is being done, then that becomes, yeah, nice, clean down below, clean pile asters, we're calling them. And then have this old, dirty at the top. And so our estimate of how we're going to approach this, going out for bid late this month, probably beginning of April, bring it to the board in May. And then the work is going to, unless there's been a change in heart, we're going to be going and doing the work all through the school year, stop at the winter because it'd be a waste to spend the money to do it during the winter unless the contractor really wants to. And then finish up next summer, spring and summer. And we don't want to rush the contractor through this. That with years of experience, we set an aggressive time schedule. It's not met, then everybody's upset. So we have a reasonable schedule, give them the opportunity to have time to order their materials, get workers that are able to get clearances and work on around the children, young students, and then, um, get the work done properly. So with that, are there any questions?
No. When you look at the repointing areas, a lot of areas, a few areas, or just every one of those things have a section in that, uh, the mortar has deteriorated.
Mostly on the classroom addition. And the weather comes up from the river, river and hits the building. So that's where the worst of it is. But then it becomes a, the question, do you put a new strip here? Then you have old strips next to it, you got a lighter gray and a darker gray and.
What should the life expectancy be for mortar in between bricks?
It's, it's in decades, but it depends on the weather and depends on whether something shifted. If nothing shifted, then the weather is the biggest problem and that's where those elevations.
How long should we expect that to last?
Done properly, it should be a couple of decades at least. Because we take the mortar deep into the joint and then pack it back out, not just putting a strip on the surface.
Is there any sealing on, sealant on that that needs, uh, put in there on the outside? Or is it just?
A weatherproofing? My recommendation is no, except that there could be exceptions. But generally what happens is you seal the masonry and then that traps moisture in. Because no matter how well you do things, moisture gets into that wall. And so you want to be able to let it out again. And that's where you have to be careful about putting too much sealer or sealant on stuff.
How deep do they go when they grind it out?
A inch or deeper, three quarters. So there's a depth there so that when you pack the mortar in, it's not just a little thin layer that pops off.
So for the, for the board, what would we'd like you to consider, and not for tonight, but as we move ahead, there are three colors, obviously. Orange is where we believe that there is a safety concern. And those are predominantly the areas where there has been wood fastened to those areas and painted to match. The other areas, um, as described by Doug, are less important. My recommendation to all of you is let's get the orange piece done. The rest can be phased in at a later date, if that's something we want to do. That, that piece needs to be done. Uh, but that's for all of you to decide and to deliberate. The sooner we can get started, obviously, the better because we're going to have to take winter time off. Um, and that, that's not going to help us. Um, but, uh, so that's my thoughts on the, on the project. I don't know if anyone has any comments or would like to push back or.
What did we budget for just the orange?
This, this would come out of capital.
Did we have an idea what was going to cost this?
Yeah.
We already had, we didn't have an idea?
Yeah, that's part of it.
We did not. So the estimated, Doug, what is the estimated cost for the orange only?
One million, I got 036, so one, 1.04 million.
And then if you add the other two parts, you get 1.7 and change.
1.7 is.
It says 1.7.
And that is including our engineering and architectural fees, other fees, insurance, all the other costs that go into it.
Any of this impacted by tariffs, by shortage of supplies? What should we know that's going to catch us off guard?
Fortunately, there shouldn't be too much. The material we're using, we got the brick, which is manufactured locally. So that's not a problem, certainly not a tariff problem. And we're not really doing much with metals, which could be a problem.
The point, the point is not in the oranges, is it?
The pointing is in the green.
So.
Orange is taking out those big plates and putting in bricks.
So if we didn't, if we didn't do the pointing now, can it, can it deteriorate more across this more likely?
Yes, it can. Um, if you put something off like this, because there's places where you have control joints, where there's no mortar in between the brick, it's filled with, filled with sealant. That's wearing out. That's a place where water can get in and what, particularly when it freezes, then it does damage. And these joints that need to be repointed, it's another place where water can get in, it freezes and does damage.
So while we're there, I would seriously consider the pointing at least to be done.
And I don't know if it's going to fall into timelines you gave roughly there, um, bits, bags, things like that where.
Yeah, I'll get into that.
You're going to get it, okay.
Yeah, we're pretty far along on having those prepared. Yeah.
Is there a guarantee on this work?
I guarantee and there's a construct, every, every time that you do something, you have a one-year guarantee from the contract.
Just the same guarantee we have for the bridge.
That's my concern. And I share that concern, the concern also that, um, you know, the, the green and the blue, like, you know, as I told these guys, I, I did, um, go to the, the public meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago in the auditorium. And I just said, like, love you guys, love talking about bricks. I love everything I've learned about masonry over the last two years. Really don't want to see you again after we have this conversation. Like in five years, are we going to be sitting here having the same conversation? But is it going to no longer be 252,000? Is it going to be 460,000? Like that's, that is a concern of mine where I'm like, should we consider doing at least the repointing of the green and the blue? And I guess we're repointing as well.
You're absolutely right. We got very lucky with the demolition of coal faxes. Because I think it got cheaper from when we originally.
I think, I mean, that's all part of the bid process. Once you get the actual bids in and you know the actual costs, it's going to be a little bit easier for us to make decisions. I think, you know, again.
Do we go to bid out for all of it?
Oh, yes.
And then make a decision?
Well, yeah, there, there'll be sections.
Okay.
So you could break them out.
Okay.
Take it off. And there's a lot on how we go to bid, so.
Okay, good. That's what I guess I didn't realize is if we were deciding on only going out to bid for the orange, but we are going to go out to bid and get numbers on everything.
Yeah.
And then we can decide if we're only going to do.
I think we're trying to keep our costs down, especially this year because we don't know what impact we're going to see, you know, coming through. So I think the point of the board, as Mr. Plino pointed out last week, you know, we're trying to look to not break the bank. You know, we're looking to cut costs where we can. And if this is something we can, I hate to say kick down the road, you know? But these things, you know, you're saying, you know, it's not a dangerous area, there's no impact to safety. You know, a lot of it is cosmetic.
And I would think, once we go out to bid, one of the things to do is to have an onsite so you can see what he's talking about when you have the deterioration. That's going to help have, help you make a decision like that. So those type of things, though, it's, it's almost like preventative maintenance type of things.
Yeah.
They're, you're going to do it now, you're going to do it later. And the problem is, what could that cost be later? Again, that's a decision we just have to make. But I would say that at some point, we actually do an onsite, uh, so we can show them.
And show you.
Right.
Green area base, bottom three feet. Because if you go look at it, you'll see that over the past maybe five to seven years, uh, the district either hired someone or the district banks has gone in.
Tried to do something.
A lot of the mortar joints replaced. So if you just stop and look at the building, you can see different colored floor because it was deteriorating. And what else is happening is it seems as though the mortar is separating from the blocks. So you'll see little crack, hairline cracks where the mortar is now basically broken away from the block. And it's, it's prevalent around that place. And we would be able to show you. So I know that at our last meeting, someone asked how long could we wait? And we were suggesting, you don't wait more than a few years if you're going to delay. And we were suggesting, you don't wait more than a few years if you're going to delay, say, the green part.
And that's, again, I think we can go do that, walk through them. Be easier for you to make decisions on something.
What year was that done up there? We don't.
It was when it started and then when it, where it got completed, so it's a range. Thank you.
Anything else?
Good, Derek? All right, thank you. I don't want to keep you here all night, so I'm going to zip through this. We've seen the lobby many, many times. So. Going to start through this, uh, the floor plan of the lobby. I think that you have this in your pamphlet, so you should be able to, uh, see what we have here on the screen. But the new, uh, gang toilet rooms are off to the right, both men and women. And just down below that, in the lower right corner is a universal, uh, toilet room. And you can see the storefront that goes across the top with the two sets of doors in it. That full storefront will be replaced. Uh, over to the left of that, you see three built-in, um, display cases. That, uh, you can put some trophies and things in from your music and arts department. Further to the right, uh, you can see by the steps that go up to the corridor, there is the lift that we are, uh, going to replace. Apparently it hasn't been working for quite some time. And you can't get the parts, uh, the company is now out of business. So we will have to replace it with a different company's lift. I'm just going to keep going. Uh, this shows just what is called a reflected ceiling plan. In other words, if you look up and you see a ceiling tile, we're trying to do something a little different there in the ceiling of the lobby. More conventional into the gang toilet room areas. And we'll keep giving you some more information here. This is a drawing of the storefront as, uh, we're detailing it to be replaced. Uh, some of the details that will be necessary to do that. Uh, you can see up in the top by the storefront in the gray, those are heating units that are going to be removed. Because now we're going to a different system where we provide both heating and air conditioning. Uh, this shows you at the very, uh, right side by our title block. You'll see a big HVAC unit that sits outside on the ground. It'll be enclosed with a vented screen wall so that you don't see it. But we have to have air movement to it. And then ductwork will go up and through inside the building, below the structure of the roof and above the ceiling. And be distributed from there to provide both heating and air conditioning. Uh, just some typical detailing. We were just showing you the, where we were a couple of weeks ago with the detailing. This drawing is hard to understand, but there's a long horizontal corridor there. And there's a line that's running down the corridor. And what that's showing is that we're going all the way over to the right side, going down to the basement and connecting our electrical power there. Because there's not enough power in that end of the building for these renovations. Uh, just some more electrical drawings. Some more electrical details of how they're doing their electrical risers and stuff. It doesn't really mean not to, to lay people necessarily, but, uh, now we're getting into some plumbing drawings. The drawing on the lower right, uh, shows a couple of lines that go out and then connects to vertical lines. So in other words, right outside, uh, of the, uh, lobby there is both sanitary. And, uh, stormwater that we can connect to, so that's very convenient. And so that, that's going to work out really well. Uh, this is what the outside storefront will look like. It's very similar to what's there now, except we're beefing up the aluminum extrusions to a heavier extrusion. And, uh, maybe a wider extrusion, some of them are four inches instead of two inches, trying to add structure to the system. Uh, typically storefronts, uh, you know, a good height to stop at is ten feet. You can go to twelve, this is a little over twelve, so we're just beefing up that structure.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
With, um, the, the upgrade, you know, with doors and everything. Have you talked with our emergency management personnel about and our admin about if the doors will be fitting in to the plan that they're working on?
I have not been told of a plan that you're working on, so.
Magnetic locking.
Magnetic locking doors. Uh, we have to get some information from you on that then, if you have a company you're already working with. Yeah, that, that's not hard, we can incorporate that. But, uh, right now, we're in the process of creating the hardware with a hardware, uh, supplier. So right now is a good time to have that information, we'll incorporate it pretty quickly.
And these discussions are about glass, the type of glass that we had in there.
It is a double pane glass that's there. Uh, it is a, uh, it is a thermal glass of some sort.
I thought we had glass that was, uh, like resistant to.
Oh, we're going to put a film on it, yes. There's going to be a security film on the glass, on the lower portions of the glass. Yes, that is correct. Yeah, I understand what you're saying now, if that's what you were talking about, but he was talking about something a little different. Yeah, this is security.
We did bring up like the centigic system we talked about. I believe Dr. Grace, I think the last meeting that we were in the lobby, I feel like we talked about having to communicate.
We did.
With our centigics folks.
At the same time, then we went to Plum School District and watched theirs. There's flexibility to move those, uh, as long as we coordinate with centigics. So we don't believe that that would be any type of issue, but we'll work with the forming group and make sure that everything works.
I just remember, I know we had talked about.
Yeah, what we had talked about is that you have your own group of people, separate, that we're going to coordinate our work with. So they're going to have to do some disconnecting for us of what's already there and then reconnect it. Once we put our storefront system in, but we also need to know if they need to run anything inside the storefront framing itself. Or whether they want to surface mount it, so we do need to do some coordination. I'll get together with Patrick, uh, this week and we'll find, get some information, sure. Uh, this really is just to show off to the left that we're adding a window at the end of the corridor that bypasses the two new gang toilet rooms. To try to brighten that area up instead of just doing it with artificial lighting. Uh, this is a rendering of the lobby. You can see a new ceiling system in there. Uh, off to the right, we're still looking for a vertical slat system that works for us. I did bring a couple of tonight and, uh, did you bring my folder? That we're looking at, uh, we haven't decided on either one of them yet. But, uh, we did have a supplier come in last week. Yeah. This is one possible system. Uh, this is actually an acoustical system. And, uh, what we could do is just kerf it. In other words, just cut in between here a little bit, just a little bit deep and then this could radius. And, uh, you could either glue it directly to the structural glaze tile. Or I understood from today's meeting with them, that they actually have a peel and stick system, which is even easier. Uh, so we're going to get a sample of that and this is one possibility. But what's interesting about this. Is that they can take it and make it look like wood. So, um, I'll just pass this around.
But it gives you a similar feeling to what's going to be on the floor.
That's one system that we're looking at.
Is that less costly than, um, I know we had talked about painting the tile and things like that.
No, it's, it's more expensive than painting the tile.
Is that fire resistant?
Well, it's in corporate lobbies, so it has to be, that's what we're looking into right now, just to clarify that it is. Because we can't put it in if it isn't. But it has to be because it's in all kinds of commercial installations. Uh, but we'll, we'll verify that for sure. Uh, this is another system and, uh, it's really, uh, some type of a wood system. And it radiuses on its own, as you can see. Uh, it comes in six, six inch wide strips and you just interconnect it like this. And then we just glue it to the wall. So that's another possibility.
You have to talk them into peel and stick?
Yeah, I do.
So, uh, back to the, uh, photo here, you can see at the back, there's a very colorful, what looks like a painting on the wall. Actually, that's a, uh, display screen. We had talked about having a display somewhere, electronic, where you could go and look up someone from the past. Instead of having the, the, uh, wall hangings. So that's a possible location for it. That's also the wall that screens the entrance into the men's room, you know, to provide more privacy into that room. Um, we had, uh, been asked a question at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. Can there be an alternate location for that? So directly behind this view is the wall beside the lift. Uh, if you prefer it back there by the lift, we could do it back there instead of here. Or we could provide the opportunity for putting it in both locations. So I, you know, I would like to get some kind of decision in the next few days from you as to what you want to do there. Whether we want to look at another location directly behind this photo. Okay. Off to the left, you see display cases, uh, that we're going to build into the wall. And, uh, that's about fifteen feet of linear by seven foot tall display. So there's quite a bit of display in there. It's going to be recessed into the wall. Yes. We're going to build a wall out, we're going to cover the, the whole wall like we're doing in the back with drywall floor to ceiling. And then we're going to recess it into that. Nicest way to clean up that end of the lobby. Okay, there you can see a closer up view of the entrance into the men's toilet. You can see what we've created as a shelf above there that you can put displayed items on top of that. And we're going to have some spots, some spotlights recessed into the ceiling to help with display.
Derek, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Back to, um. Number thirty-five. Where that display screen would be.
Yes.
Do those doors open to exit all the way to that wall? Or is there?
No, they do not, there, there's space.
There is a space.
Yeah, there's five or six feet before those doors.
Yeah. Just curious, like people standing there when people are trying to hit it out.
No, no. There you can see, so you can see the glass panels, there's two of them actually, before you see the door. Yeah, that's the same location you were just asking about. So there's, there's a good maybe six feet there before you get to the door. Okay, Springdale Junior Senior High School Lobby, approximate cost. We're still carrying a cost from almost a year ago. We had, uh, uh, some changes, uh, there's been inflation, we're slightly under what we were a year ago for this project. We're estimating the total project cost, which includes all design fees and legal fees. And every other cost associated with doing a project at one point three eight five million. Uh, we have a construction contingency within that. A lot of people don't understand what a construction contingency is. So in other words, we have forty-two thousand inside of that one point three million dollars for something that may come up during construction. Things are going to come up during construction on this project. One of the reasons that will happen is because we have no existing drawings of this building. So we don't know what happens inside the walls. We don't know what happens with the foundations of the walls. We don't know what happens under the terrazzo. The terrazzo could have been built in a variety of different thicknesses, anywhere up to maybe two and three quarter inch thick or one inch thick. We don't know what's there. So we're sup, we're supposing that it's about a two and a half to two and three quarter inch thick system. Because that looks like what they called an old sand bed terrazzo installation, which is what was typical back when that was built. Um, the way that it's constructed with all the metal strips in between it, the sizes, that's what we think it is. Uh, not the newer systems that you have in your new revised gang toilet rooms of a decade ago. Where it's more of a monolithic quarter inch thick system on a, on concrete. It's, this is a different type of system, we believe. But there have been some odd things that we've, think we've discovered on how this is constructed differently than what we would typically see. And we're just surmising that it's different than what we would typically think it should be. So we may end up with some issues where we open a wall, we have to put like that side window. Uh, we're anticipating where the slab is versus where the brick is outside. We can't be totally sure, uh, so there may be slight adjustment there, things like that. Um, that entrance slab that go, uh, at the storefront, we believe it actually goes under the storefront, which is a very atypical, uh, situation. Uh, typically you would not do that because I think that they are partially resting the storefront on that exterior slab. Uh, you've seen that the slab is starting to deteriorate. Um, but the slab, uh, is only out about four feet. And by new code, it would have to be five feet if we were to replace it. The slabs are not moving up and down between each other, which means to us that there's probably what's called a foundation under it. Around the entire perimeter of it, holding it together. So what we would prefer doing is just repairing those slabs now. There are concrete repair systems and coating systems, repairing it for now, leaving it in place, not taking it out. Uh, but then replace it as part of your exterior work project that you may do in the near future for the outside area. Correct it at that time and probably what we would do is just cut the slab right in front of the storefront, remove that portion. Then put a new, a correct length slab in at that time. That way, we're not getting into something that leads us into something else that we don't want to get into right now in site work. Okay?
So the new storefront will rest on that?
It will partially, yes. Yeah, we, we don't think it does entirely, but we think it does partially. Again, we have no drawings, but based on what we're seeing there, that's what we're surmising. Conceptual schedule, uh, code review, uh, late March. Uh, here we are, uh, we think that we're going to go out for code review next week. So that will be for both projects, so that was the first question. Uh, both projects right now are about ninety-eight percent ready. And, uh, so over the next week, we'll be pulling that together and then issuing it to, uh, uh, Springdale Borough. Who reviews it first for a couple of days. And then it goes from there to a third party code agency for their review. My understanding right now, I spoke to them a few weeks ago, is that that process is going very quickly right now, which is good for you. Uh, perhaps in the neighborhood of two weeks, once we submit. So if that's the case, that's very, very good. But that's where we are right now, hopefully, you know, within a month, we're out to bid. Okay, so we want their approval, we don't like going out the bid without having approvals. That's kind of a dangerous proposition. So that's where we are and, you know, hopefully, again, uh, award sometime in May. Uh, at the latest, uh, hopefully your May thirteenth board meeting. Uh, and then, uh, you have a few weeks to get contracts arranged. Usually that can take place in about three weeks, which lines you up with right at the first week of June. Soon as school's out, uh, to begin construction. Now, part of this is that there is some environmental work that needs done. And, uh, there will be a separate, uh, uh, bid contract to have that done. And, uh, so I need to get in touch with them this week because we know where we need them to do their work. And they'll have to put together their document for bid, they'll put it out for bid and bid the same day. We will open our bids first, then they will open their bids after us, and then you will have all of the information. They will then get their contracts with you, just like we would. And then they would go in first and get their work done first. Our understanding is it shouldn't take more than a few days. So it's, you know, one week, it's not a length of time. And then we can get in there and start our work mid-June. That's where we are right now in this project. We're hoping that we have what's called substantial completion by Thanksgiving. Which means that you can fully occupy all of the work that's been done, fully use it. But there may be some punch list items, like they have to repair that corner of the wall where they forgot to do this over here, they forgot to do this over there. Punch list items, usually this project's not that large. We would hope that within two months after that, uh, the project's done and signed off and fully paid.
Have you, um, thought about the tariffs and stuff like that since we are working with?
Well, again, uh, I don't know what the tariffs are going to do to this project. We have very little steel, we have very little concrete. That item, these ones that we passed around, you know, they're specialized items. I can't tell you what's going to happen, I know one of them, I believe, comes from Canada. So that's kind of interesting with what's going on right now. Um, we're trying to come up with the best approach we can for that. I may take it as an alternate, paint it or do this. Uh, and then you can decide on bid day, that's just too much right now, I'm not doing that, let's just paint it right now. The way that we will install this, it would be very easy to do in the future. We're going to install it from, there's a, a eight inch black, uh, ceramic tile base that goes around the entire room. We're going to start at the top of that base and go up about, uh, six feet to the underside of a cap of structural, uh, of that ceramic tile. So we're just looking for a six. So we're just looking for a six inch piece that you apply over that. That could be done at any time. So if the price comes in, the overall prices come in, you're not happy, and that's a number that you're not happy with, you could paint it and, and deal with it at another time, too. Okay. So I have some other things.
I was going to say, this is really small compared to our big sheets, but you're not disappointing me, Harry.
Well, what this is, and I only made presets because there are so many drawings. I'm just going to share and look at them at your leisure. Not necessarily tonight because I'm busy. We'll put it out at this end. If you don't mind, can I take these pieces back with me as I'm still looking? Okay, that's one of the projects. That's the majesty project. What we're doing here is showing you the extent of the documents right now. That are part of the set of documents that go out for bid. Again, they're about 98%. There's still some, still some work that needs done to update it all. And we're going to clear that up in the next week or so for these drawings, and then they'll be ready with some code. But I wanted you to see that Gibson has been working for you. And we're almost ready to go out for bid. The other thing that you're going to see as part of this package is, you know, you've seen it before. This is called a project manual. It has all the legal stuff in it. It has all the specifications for all the materials, how to install it, all of those things you've been working with. Man Hoffman's office, to go over all the legal information that's in there, the insurance information has already been updated. All the agreements are already in there, but there are a few other things that Mr. Hoffman's office is still reviewing. See if I'll get that back within the next week, and that will all be incorporated within the project manual along with all the spec items. Each project will have a project manual that goes along with the drawings for that. Describes, informs everything and sees what the contractors need to do and how they have to do.
Will that be provided to us electronically last time we did project for that?
Yes, yeah. It, it goes to a bid house electronically, and yes, you're good.
Hard to find those old papers.
Yeah, it's hard to find old papers. I've been through your, I've been through your.
You need some light reading, Mr. Paul.
I've been through all your drawers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Thank you. All right. Moving along, I do have some information about the Department of Education, and that's the U.S. Department of Education. This comes from Acting Secretary Rowe. I'm going to summarize some of the information that she shared. Before I do that, Allegheny Valley does receive federal funds. We also, through numerous boards that have sat in these seats, have made very smart financial decisions. So if something were happening in a pinch, we have money to cover it on the short term. However, dipping into our fund balance isn't a solid practice to do continuously. So with that in mind, it looks like at this time, most of the changes are done in terms of positions. So it looks like according to the email I've received, is that the workforce was decreased by nearly 50% in terms, and that was as of March 21st. So that could change. As we know, things do change quickly and rapidly. But as of March 21st, I'm sorry, to begin on March 21st, 50% of the staff will be reduced, which means for the most part, when we need assistance, we're going to have difficulty reaching people that we need help with. In terms of funding, there isn't anything indicating that funds are going to be stopped to Allegheny Valley School District or school districts soon or in the near future. That doesn't mean that it might not happen. So despite the reductions, the USDA has stated it will continue to fulfill its statutory obligations, including dispersing formula funding, managing student loans, administering Pell Grants, supporting special education funding, overseeing competitive grant programs. Governor Shapiro also said in an interview, when it comes to the United States Department of Education, understand that in practical terms, they play for the state and for school districts that really rely on this federal funding. That's a real problem. There would be an immediate negative impact if they shut down the Department of Education and shut down its mission. And we're going to do everything we can to try and make sure our school districts aren't hurt. Just last week, we had our very first of our public finance discussions sharing. And one of the things, a trend that I noticed is that we're not looking to expand our budget in great numbers. There are items we're talking about. We want to provide the best for our students, as you heard and mentioned, but we don't believe that this is a time to be making extraordinary purchases. Now with that also in mind, we have a fund balance. So for the projects that we were talking about, we don't need to take out loans for those. We have the money to pay for those projects that were mentioned. So in short, at this point in time, as of March 21st, 50% of the U.S. Department of Education staff will be reduced. In terms of funding, we believe that it will remain in place. If it doesn't, in the short term, we have a strong and healthy fund balance, and then we would have to make decisions from there on in on how we would go about that. I also want to draw attention to, even though we receive federal funding, we have to share that money with our non-public schools. So for example, if we have a student at Chesapeake Christian Academy, they receive a portion of our funds. So the public school pushes out their money to the non-public schools. It's not a gigantic sum of money, but it is a sum of money that we are required to push out to those schools. So I don't want anyone to think that whatever the money dollar amount is we receive, we capture all of that because we don't. So that's what I have from the Department of Ed. If there are questions, I'll do my best at fumbling around some type of response. The honest response is I really don't know what else will happen. Questions, comments, anybody? Okay. Also last week, we talked about cyber funding. Dr. Raj Paul had mentioned that. This coincides with a letter that the 42 superintendents put out to our legislators on March 10th. And I will just read the first sentence of that letter that I was a part of. On behalf of the 42 school districts of suburban Allegheny County, we renew our call for meaningful charter school funding reform, such as the $8,000 per student tuition cap proposed by Governor Shapiro. So the superintendents have already affirmed this once. We are reaffirming it again. We believe that there needs to be a cap on cyber charter tuition. And I did include that in my board update for the board of directors, if you did not have a chance to read that.
Dr. Gray, so going back to your legislative letters that you sent, there, the AIU does sponsor a legislative forum. There's been a group from, of board members that have gone in the past. It's very informative. They say you can, you know, send in your questions or stuff, but they usually run out of time, you know, to do that because of the, the responses that the legislative representatives are given. So you, we can go down live, or this year they're offering it virtually.
Oh, they are offering it.
Yeah, you know, so you can do virtual and be assured you'll, you know, get to and from your house okay. But that's on March 27.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. You said March 22nd?
27.
27. Thank you. The June 10th Agenda Planning Meeting will take place at our alternate location, which is the Rachel Carson Conference Room located at the Junior Senior High School. And then I have, last item here, we have two students that have been nominated for the James Collins Scholar-Athlete Award. And those two students are Brianna Ross. Brianna is a standout soccer player, player for us. She has been nominated for the WPIL James Collins Scholar-Athlete Award. We will find out the outcome of that very soon. And we also have Garrett Myers, who is a standout track and field student athlete for us at Springdale Junior Senior High School. And he also has been nominated for the James Collins Scholar-Athlete Award. And that does include my report.
But also because we're moving.
All right. Mr. Pollak, I know you're with us virtually. Would you like Mrs. Hoz to, or another member to review that? Or do you want to make motions under your items for consent? We'll be with you shortly, Mr. Pollak. Bills and payment. I skipped over you last time, too.
I know, I know. Wait, wait, wait.
Well, Mr. Pollak.
He skipped bills and payments, Larry. He skipped bills, so we're going to go back one. Item 5.1, recommend the board approve the February 2025 Treasurers Report, the Payment of Bills, Dispersment Ledger, and the Accounts Payable List.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hoz. Any question on the motions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, please cast your vote. Motion passed. Now, Mr. Pollak, if you'd like to move on to consent agenda items. I, I would do that. Does anybody want to? Phoebe, do you want to?
I'm lost.
Okay.
I got it. I got it. Item 6.1, recommend the board approve consent, consent agenda items 6.2 to 6.9.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Eckert. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. And again, would you, Ms. Honor, would you like to do the next one, operation of finance?
I sure can. We already had our presentation, so we will move to item 7.2, Field Turf Incorporated Agreement. Recommend the board approve an agreement with Field Turf USA Incorporated for the artificial turf project of a multi-purpose field at Springdale Junior Senior High School, and to authorize Field Turf USA Inc. to proceed with construction services under that agreement with pricing based on the Keystone Purchasing Network, KPN, at a total estimated construction cost of $1,973,412. Additional contingency costs, possible $188,360.48. Project management services, bonding fee, $133,854.77. Additional for alternate to LED lighting, all new poles and electrical, and the amount of $385,000.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Was that Ms. Paulovich? I'm sorry. We have a, any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your select vote selection.
Okay. All right. Item number 7.3, recommend the board ratify the purchase of pro groomer slash drag equipment used for baseball slash softball fields from Pioneer Manufacturing Company in the amount of $6,682.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion?
I just want to add that that is a replacement. That isn't something new.
Right.
That's replacement.
Is that, is that the nail drag? We've had stuff that disappeared. How does stuff walk away?
Like anything else, I'm, you know, those fields are, are open. It's, I think the drag we had was a different style, too. Probably to be old and carried off. But again, I think this one is more suited to the equipment we have now as well.
I remember years ago, our pitching machine up in the balcony of the gym walked away.
Unbelievable. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other question, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. Next item.
7.4 Parcel ID Agreement. Recommend the board approve the sales agreement related to parcel ID 622P030 to Jason and Christine Dommeratz in the amount of $3,500. Legal fees and any other costs will be the owner's responsibility.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. Moving on.
7.5 Settlement Agreement. Recommend the board approve the settlement agreement with CLCS.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to abstain.
All right. Want to abstain? Motion passed. We don't need to roll call just one of the same. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
7.6 SEIU Local 32 BJ Collective Bargaining Agreement. Recommend the board approve the Service Employees International Union Local 32 BJ SEIU Collective Bargaining Agreement for a period of five years effective July 1st, 2024 to June 30, 2029.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. I'm sorry. Ms. Murray, I'm sorry. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. All right, Mrs. Eckert, would you like to do education, please?
Yes. Just a few things to report for this week. Once again, the junior senior high school students sponsored the empty bowls program. The art students create bowls, dishes, and mugs, and the consumer science students cook a lunch of soup, salad, and dessert. Those attending pay a small fee for the meal and a bowl. The proceeds, generally $300 a year, are donated to the Lower Valley Food Bank. A big thank you to Ms. Mandy Harrison and those students whose talent and time made this donation possible. Over 200 middle school students attended a mock trial event at La Roche University. Students came from North Allegheny, Hampton, Avonworth, Fox Chapel, Deer Lakes, Shaler, Riverview, Shartiers Valley, and Springdale. Arguing the plaintiff's side of the case for Springdale were Ella Trifano, Trifanoff, Jonathan Youngworth, Tony Peter Griggle, Addison Crum, Mateo Arnone, and Michaelina Wolfinger, who won the event. Defending the accused were Valen Mundock, Tyler Harpine, Adele Waters Grable, Percy, Percy Price, Ashlyn Scotis, and William Benedict. As determined by the opposing schools, best witnesses, Percy Price and Mateo Arnone, and best advocates, Valen Mundock and Jonathan Youngworth. And congratulations to our Acatonia, Acatonia Elementary Vocal Music Teacher, Mr. Zach George, on his nomination for the Pittsburgh Mamalo Music Teacher Award. 12 teachers in the Pittsburgh area were chosen. Mr. George was nominated for his work with the Baldwin Marching Band. Follow the link on the e-newsletter, and you can vote for Mr. George for that. And just a reminder, the third quarter ended today. No school for students this Thursday, which is parent-teacher conferences, or Friday, which is a staff professional development day. And then Amy, do you want to say anything about the book fair or anything?
Sure, yeah. So the parent-teacher conferences will take place on Thursday afternoon and Thursday evening. There are also some interactive, I guess like booths almost or tables to visit in the gym and maybe other parts of the building. We do want to be mindful that if you are visiting the school on Thursday evening, that teachers will be doing conferences with parents and students on a schedule. So you just want to be mindful of signs. And then, yes, the PTO's book fair.
And then, yes, the PTO's book fair is taking place. So anyone who loves that nostalgic feel of a scholastic book fair, come on down and get some books. We did, we've had a really successful week of the kids shopping. And what was really nice is that we were able to provide books for everyone. So students who came, they either just forgot their money or didn't have or whatever. It didn't matter. We didn't like quiz kids on why they didn't. We just said, you know, if you have money and you have your e-wallets to shop, that's great. If not, we gave everyone else, they had a coupon and they could shop from a selection of books that the PTO purchased with the school's scholastic dollars. They had like books that they could actually shop from, from that. So everybody went home with something. They also may have chosen like, there were some like pencil gadget things. They may have chosen that instead of a book, sorry, parents. But we tried our best to put books in the hands of everybody, so. But yeah, that'll go through Thursday night. So thank you. Come on down.
Nice, good. Okay, and then we're going to move on to 8.2. Recommend the board approve the 2025-2026 Program of Studies for Springdale Junior Senior High School, grades seven through eight.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Okay. And then 8.3, recommend the board approve the 2025-2026 Program of Studies for Springdale Junior Senior High School, grades nine through 12.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mrs. Harno. Question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Please enter your vote selection. Move on to technology. Mrs. Paulovich, any, any reports?
No, never spoken any.
No reports? Thank you. Personnel, Ms. Hawes.
Thank you. Item 10.2, recommend the board approve the following independent voters, volunteers. You know where my mind's at. For the 24, 25 school year as listed below.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Harno. Question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote.
10.3, recommend the board approve the employment of the following athletic staff listed below.
These are two voluntary positions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zekker. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.4, recommend the board ratify, oh, wait. To vote. Ratify the employment of the following classified staff as listed below.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Please enter your vote selection. Moving on.
10.5?
Yes.
Recommend the board approve the employment of the following professional staff as listed below.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harno. Any question on the motion?
I just want to add, when Ms. Cosme came in for her board meet and greet, she would, she would, she's currently working through the IU to service our students. So she's very familiar with the students. She has a classroom set up, and her way she's teaching these kids is showing very good success. So I think she's a really good addition to our staff.
Right. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Okay. Item 6.10. Recommend the board accept if you regret the resignation of the following staff. I don't know, McCleavy?
McCleary.
McCleary.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Okay, the last item, 10.7, recommend the board approve the employment of the following summer custodial worker, Jean Martin, $15 an hour.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zekker. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, please enter your vote selection. Move on to emergency management. I'm sorry, hold on a second. I, Ms. Harno, emergency management, any report?
I do, yes. I didn't give one last week, and the emergency management committee did need this afternoon. So a couple of things to report. The board may notice that last week, we did have a placeholder item on there for engineering work related to the speed limit signage. We still need our solicitor to review that, so we're just going to hold off on that. But we did get some more information today and clarification on the speed limit sign project at Acpatonia. You know, just looking into the letter that Pendak did send us. So as it is, they did approve the speed limit signage and the change. It is our responsibility to, you know, do the work that will be involved, which is part of that engineering plan. So that has to be done first, and then would be the purchase and the installation of the signage. So we'll have more information about all that, again, after the solicitor looks at everything and maybe, you know, kind of give everyone like a timeline of that. But interesting, and as we read the law and really got into it, why it kind of falls on us into something because we did pursue it. We don't have it because our students do not walk to the school. So that is why, even though it is still by law, whether they're walking or not, drivers must be driving 15, must not be going over 15 miles per hour. No matter what signage you have, that is state law. But because we don't have students walking here, we are not required to have that signage put in by anybody else. It's, it's very interesting. So we're just still exploring it and still, you know, making sure that we have all the information before we would vote on anything or decide anything. We do personally think, as a committee, it is very much needed, and we're still continuing, continuing to look at other plans and how we can alleviate drop-off issues and, and the traffic around that, around acne and everything. So we'll have more information forthcoming.
I would just want to commend the administrators that worked on securing that approval. I mean, that took hours and hours and hours of work, you know, and just the research they did, things you wouldn't even think that you would have to look into, and they did. And I really want to commend them for everything they've done and moving forward, you know, looking for the work they have to do, and, and they gladly accept the challenge.
Now that we have all the contacts and the other things, we can say, how about looking at the high school?
Yeah, absolutely. Phase two.
Go ahead, it's hot.
There are students that walk to the school.
There are, correct. There are.
They choose not to take the bus, even though they could, they walk.
There are, yeah. Yes, that was argued, and it was also argued that even if we don't have primary, you know, it's primarily walkers, and they're not walking, you know, they are walking behind that fenced area of the hill. They're not walking on the street or a sidewalk. So, you know, many bands of children pulling out of that school, it's still dangerous. So, yep, those points have been made for sure. So we did have that. We did recently complete a second emergency drill at Acpatonia, much like we, how we did the second one at the high school, to really thoroughly evaluate any areas of need regarding our PA system, cameras, speakers, the walkie-talkies, everything. And I happened to be in the building once again during it, so I got to witness it. And, you know, it, it was pulled off wonderfully, and, you know, different areas of need or improvement were noted as well, so that is good. We will have an upcoming executive presentation from our emergency management committee about requests and equipment and things like that that are coming in, you know, down the road for next year. I think emergency management is one of those things where because we have closed meetings and the information is so sensitive, you guys kind of only hear about it when we need money. And it's like, hey, we need $300,000 for doors or something like that. So there is so much work, and again, it takes months and even years to, whether we're getting the grants or making the plans for these improvements. So we are going to plan to have executive time to discuss those things in the next month or so, for sure. And then, sentegics, those are the badges that the board did approve to purchase. Getting information and training on that has started. We want to give a really big shout out to Plum Borough School District. They are one of the local districts that has already implemented sentegics. So a team of administrators, including those on the emergency management committee, did go and visit Plum Borough, so shout out to their police department and all of their emergency manager folks over there. We got to really see how it works in action. There's already been meetings with the teachers' union, questions that they had about it. So we're moving forward with all of the training and implementation of that moving forward. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Athletics, any report, Mrs. Rinaldi?
No report tonight, thank you.
All righty. Moving on to policy and legislative affairs, Ms. Moretti.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. I just want to repeat, Dr. Rajkopal, last week in her presentation for the operations and finance and, you know, general presentation, she did alert everybody to the changes to policy 626 to adhere to federal guidelines. And that's under an attachment. If you look at policy number 626, there's a little attachment box, and it is one of those. And it had last year's amounts in it, and they needed to be updated, you know, for the monitoring we're now presently going through. So I just wanted to repeat from Dr. Rajkopal there. And again, that the IU is sponsoring a legislative forum, live or virtual, on March 27. That's a very interesting evening, to say the least. Under item 13.2, recommend the board approve the second reading of the policies listed below, 116, 717, 917, 113.2, 202, 247, 249, 245, and to retire policy number 248 under unlawful harassment. That does fall under, that's it? Yeah, Title IX, so that is no longer necessary.
You said 245, it's actually 254 for the educational opportunities for military troops.
Thank you, Mr. Plino.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zekker. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, the motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. All right, at this time, I'll open the floor to any board members that have discussion items.
Excellent, two quick things. One is that the Springdale Drama Club will be putting on their musical, and that'll happen before our next meeting. It is April 3rd, 4th, and 5th. It is a production of Shrek the Musical, which is a fun one. I don't think tickets have gone on sale yet. And I was just wondering, I know we kind of wanted to get through the, oh, they are on sale? Excellent, oh, good. Oh, my gosh, okay, I haven't seen the link yet. So make sure you check those out. And Springdale Drama Club, they do have a Facebook page, you can follow them, and they post a lot of the links there. I know we just wanted to, we wanted to get through the items pretty quickly after a long beginning, but I just want to, I guess, make some additional commentary on, first, that I'm just so pleased that we did vote unanimously for the track tonight and for those improvements. I just wanted to kind of like, put out just like a couple of reminders that I think sometimes get lost, but as you kept saying, Ms. Plino, is a multi-purpose use field. So this is, you know, serving our soccer and our track team who have been playing up there for years. Their, their games are always there and those things. We are, we did announce last week that we have over 30 students on the track and field team this year, which is pretty amazing, and that they may be playing away. I've not seen the kind of public outcry over them having to play away like we did with the football team. But, you know, they will be, and they may, there's even a possibility next year, you know, depending on how the track will go. So it does serve them. It will, of course, can serve our football team, as well as our cheerleaders and band. We forget about those as well, but they do use these facilities. So it is serving like such a huge population of our students. Just a reminder, I think it's worth saying that football is about four home games a year. Going to leave that there. I do agree with our community member and other, other community members who've reached out to me or written on Facebook, although I would remind people that is not like official public comment, that we do need, you know, we voted on this tonight, and now the clock is ticking. We do need very comprehensive plans for parking for better signage, whether that's, you know, actual speed limit signage, which we know could take years, or just other kinds of signage that might be needed. Consideration of the neighbors, although, again, I would remind that we have had soccer and track there for a long time. And also, there were people that lived near the football field. So we are used to like dealing with neighbors and things like that. And I just want to say, I know that money is such a concern. I know there's a lot of trepidation about, and I really appreciate Dr. Grace's comments about federal funding, and I'm a teacher, and I'm also a teacher at a cyber school. So as usual, this time of year, I'm terrified, wondering if I'll have a job next year. Pretty normal, standard stuff. It really isn't any different if you're in education, whatever's going on at the federal level. It is scary, but it is really no different than what we deal with every year. And Dr. Rajkopal could probably tell you that we're always waiting to hear what the federal, you know, folks are going to do, what the state folks are going to do. That shouldn't stop us from continuing to improve our facilities. Yes, we are spending money. It is, as I said during our exec session today, quite literally, almost our only job as a board is actually to spend money. We bring in revenue, and I know, but like, it is literally what we do. And it should be done. And there's always a lot of conversation. I always think the phrasing of my tax dollars. It's so interesting, because once you've paid your taxes, it isn't actually money anymore, and you're not left without representation. It is our students, you know, money, and the, a large part of our budget, 70% of it, is spent on student instruction. And the rest should be spent on the upkeep and improvement of our facilities. The fact that that auditorium lobby doesn't only just look the same and function the same in terms of access as I, as it did when I graduated high school over 20 years ago, it looks and functions the same as when my mother graduated in the 70s and probably well before that. The fact that we are in the year of our Lord, 2025, finally improving that wheelchair access, finally improving access to bathrooms, it's unconscionable. And I'm not going to woulda, shoulda, coulda anything. I wasn't on the board over the last 20 years, and things were done. We did build on to, you know, a whole sweep to both school buildings. We have made improvements, but letting the track go to such a level of disrepair, letting some of these things sit there for so long while we're sitting on, we are hands down one of the most healthy, financially healthy school districts. Read today's newspaper about what's going on in Freeport. Read about what's going on in some of these other districts. They are taking out, you know, tens of millions of dollars in loans. We don't have to do that, none of these things tonight. And if we do, if we get down the road and we have other projects, we can take loans out, because quite frankly, this board and this administration has worked so hard getting our debt down. It's just unreal what we have. I'm not saying that we spend all of this in one action, but we do have the money. And to sit on it and not make these repairs that bring us into, at the very least, the 20th century, if not the 21st century, it's just unconscionable to not do it. I think there's almost a moral imperative to make these improvements. And a board member last week went on about how, you know, we have everything that other schools want. I, I will push back on that a little bit. I think we are a beautiful gem of a district, and we do have amazing things happening here. But there are lots of things we don't have. We don't have tennis courts for our tennis players. We don't have athletic, aquatic athletics. A lot of schools have pools and swim teams. We haven't had our own football team ever. So there are a lot of things that we don't have, and our students deserve to have. They deserve to have the best, because we can't afford to give them the best. So that's just my last little soapbox on that. I just wanted to really take that stand, that I think that, and I really commend this board, and particularly you, Mr. Plino, for leading us forward in this past year on these projects. Like, we have made so much forward movement in one year that like, didn't happen. And for a lot of reasons, you know, notwithstanding the pandemic, of course, but I, I'm so glad to see this forward movement, and I hope we keep it going.
With that said, would like the board, if it's an agreement to direct the With that said, uh, would like the board, uh, if it's an agreement to direct the administration, we need to repave that parking lot.
Yes.
Um, especially with the changes that are going on up there.
Yes.
That is bad. And, uh, if nothing else, to try to get bids on what it would take there.
Yes.
If you haven't been there, it's, uh, you don't want to plow it anyhow.
Our sidewalks, all of our, and I think we had originally talked about, you know, phase one was doing this auditorium lobby. Phase two was probably was looking at the basketball lobby and then phase three was the concrete and the parking.
Well, I
Maybe we could that.
I don't think there's going to be any structural change to anything that we're going to do with that parking lot there. So getting it repaved, I think.
Is the bare minimum.
Sidewalks and and the other thing I think have to ponder, um, more of a design thing that, you know, we have to look at other areas that, you know, and how we want the flow of that traffic. So there's a few other things. I don't believe the asphalt would affect any of those other areas at this point.
Is it need to be in the form of a motion or can we just give a directive?
I don't know that we, you know, uh, that it would take a motion to direct them to get, you know, get quotes together, requirements for, um, uh, going out the bid. Do we have that formal vote on that or just? You can, we can make, yeah, we can make a motion that the, we direct the board, I mean, the administration to, um, you know, uh, solicit votes for repaving the parking lot if somebody would like to make that motion.
I would like to make the motion that the board directs the administration to go out to bid for paving the parking lot.
Do we have a second on that? We have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
You know, we did have She was talking about the tennis. We had that court down in Cheswick because we were going to put it up there and we had nowhere to put it. That's why I said Cheswick.
Were made at, at the time that were best decisions and I think they passed forth with jobs on, you know, uh, a variety of different things, management of our money, um, facilities. So these are all things that, you know, we're juggling as, as board since time goes on. So, um, any other discussion items?
I have a question.
That was
Mrs. Rinaldi seconded it.
Larry saying something?
Thank you, Mr. Pollin. Uh, any other discussion items?
I got a question.
Yes.
Do we have any idea how many students actually go to, uh, Penn State New Ken?
With them.
I mean, I mean, they're considering closing that.
Talk about closing it.
Huh?
With, you're saying current?
No, current. They typically go up there. The only reason I'm saying is that if they're considering closing, would it be prudent maybe to send, uh, them a letter how important it is?
Are they going to close that?
It's under consideration, yes. I'm just wondering if maybe it might be a good idea to maybe send them a letter how important it is. I don't know how many we do get. Uh, sure, we do get some. Not sure if it's a great number. But it is a nice avenue for the kids in this district to, to go up there.
Certainly. We'll take care of that.
That's nice for adult ed too.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I, I, I think if they know how important it is to some districts, it may help. But I'm, I don't, you know, financing is what they they're concerned about.
Also, if anyone's interested, the B N D reported today that there will be a rally, um, at Penn State New Ken on Thursday in support of keeping it open.
Where is that supposed to be?
I think at Penn State New Ken, or no, I'm sorry, New Kent, New Kent City Hall at six thirty P M. on Thursday to rally in support of keeping it open. So we might get more information there as well.
Thank you. Um, one item, I, I don't know, maybe the curriculum committee, education committee is always looking at curriculum. One of the areas that I'm still, um, think that we need to look into and I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but, um, having the middle school, uh, I think our sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, they're unique ages for those kids. Uh, our high school was designed to handle, uh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade as a, uh, as a unit there and somewhat isolate them from some of the older kids. Uh, when you get into sixth grade, again, we have them down here with the younger kids. I know it's a big project, but, um, I really think there's advantages, uh, to something like that and
Had there ever been problems?
Well, I think you have transitional issues and things like that that, uh, I mean, that we've come across when I've gone through, uh, everything from math that, when you look at that, that age group, they look at the world differently than the, the younger kids. So there is a big difference.
Well, I know a lot of parents, that's why we didn't do that. They didn't want them up there with the seventh graders and that.
Well, but then you have, you know, you didn't want the sixth graders up there, but you have seventh graders in the same place where you can isolate six, seven and eight. So there's, there's both sides to that. But the board's not interested in, you know, directing the administration to start looking at something like that. I just think that, you know, uh, it's still a, a, a point of, uh, that, that I think would be advantageous for us, especially when we look at the, the scores and where, where the strengths and weaknesses are in our curriculum. I believe that, you know, part of our issues are that, that, that age group that you see that when they're going through those transitions. But think about the age of a sixth, seventh and eighth grade. They're the teeny boppers. Those, those kids that are just think differently than the rest and they're just, it's a big transition where if it's staged, I think it's, uh, a better, uh, result. And again, and we, we need to explore the areas in improving our scores, every aspect of what we're doing. And that has always been something that I thought, you know, uh, was something that we should, should evaluate.
That was talked extensively, you know, when the school was added on to everything.
And, and we did make it so that it would be, uh, able to do those type of things, isolate those kids.
No, I mean the Acme School.
The Acme here.
When it was, you know, the transition and it was, and all the pros pointed out.
And even like, again, when you have those sixth graders that go to seventh grade, I mean, one of the challenges we had in mathematics was there was a big disconnect there. I mean, and, you know, if we have to get these intervention groups going and, uh, people onboard and, you know, it, it was like I said last time around, you know, let's look at where the problem is, not just deal with the symptoms. And maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's a discussion that, you know, is there, what are the advantages and disadvantages? And I'd like to see that come out through one of the committees that the board is, is in favor of looking at things like that. I know that that's a hard and law, uh, intense transition, but if that's what's going to make, if that's going to help us with the productivity of those children and the, and the schools, I think it's something that we shouldn't just overlook.
Yeah.
I don't think it can just be a board decision. I think the public's going to have
Oh, I agree. But unless we have the data or information to even look at those recommendations, how do you present it to the community?
Yeah, yeah. We need to, you know, really push for student success, you know, I think that's
Just one of the things that, that I think might be, uh, you know, an area to look at. So
As a middle school teacher, I would very much support that exploration.
And we have enough on our plate right now.
Got to keep going. A lot of push on.
There's always a lot
Pushing on, but that's a lot too.
All right. Any other discussion items? We'll open the floor to any audience, uh, comments on anything. Come on down again and I'm sorry, we'd like the, the rest of the community, no, the community can't hear if you're not down at the microphone. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Sally Watts, Springdale Borough.
Thank you.
Um, in reference to the parking lot, I agree. Pay attention to that corner where the drain is. Crazy backup, way out. Um, also, um, I understand you, you, you've done a great job with the district. You have, um, spare money from what I understand. Uh, the only thing is you, I urge you to please consider your audience. We've had Allegheny County taxes go up. We've had garbage, sewage, water, school taxes. If you have money, why did the school taxes go up? Um, pay attention to your audience and in reference to the auditorium, I do know that we need to, you know, facelift the school. But to what extent? Is there another bid that only covers minimal rather than all the, the safety, the bathrooms, um, and the lift? You know?
And, and, and again, those discussions have taken place, obviously, that if you take a look at the, the window structure there, it's dangerous.
That's why I said safety, bathrooms and lift.
Other than that, if you look at what we're doing, um, I mean, the original proposals were much more complex, much more expensive. This was, you know, as we went through the process, a less expensive way of doing it. But we still, it's, it's kind of, if you're going to disrupt this area, that's the time to take a look at the area and do it right. Or you're going back and replacing things that have been there for, uh, years. And, you know, you're already doing things right there. Why wouldn't you upgrade the, the eight, eight, uh, heating system and things like that? We looked at those. You have to wait, you know, when you're going to disrupt that area. And we're, we've done it in such a way that it very much minimized disruption. But other than those things that you mentioned, it's not a lot that's, that's going on that's, that'll make the big, big impact on those, those numbers that we're looking at.
Well, you know, sometimes you have to think about it like on your own personal level and your own financial situation, right? And the people of Springdale, if you take a look around town, it's not what it used to be. Okay? The houses are need repaired, the streets need done, the sidewalks need done, all are, everything's gone up in price. And I beg to differ with Ms. Sarno. It is not the, it's the taxpayers elect you to represent our thoughts. You make the best decisions on our behalf. It's our tax money being put in. I don't have a kid in the school anymore. So I, I'd like to see it being taken care of prudently. My child had a wonderful education. He had a wonderful experience at Springdale. I want all the kids to have that experience. But keep in mind your audience. That's all I'm asking.
I appreciate your, thank you. Any other, uh, audience comments seeing now, oh, come on down. That's it. State your name and where you're from.
There are, Springdale. Um, about doing a repaving, is it possible, um, to have another entrance to the parking lot be built in? Because right now there's only one. I remember going to the volleyball games, it was packed house. Going to parking lot, looking for a spot, there's nothing there, but people park the whole way to the end. You're backing up and I have somebody behind me and, you know, it's
There was two and they closed the one off.
Yeah, there's no, there's no circle because everybody finding a spot and parking's lacking, obviously. So I don't know, obviously, like right there, if an entrance could be, I don't know. Of course, money. Then if we're looking for parking, that's a lot of green there. Of course, it's money. But
Yeah, there's a lot of other, um, areas that have been discussed and looked at. But they all tie
Or maybe it's just, maybe it just needs repaved and with the line so people know where to park, you know, so we don't get blocked in like that.
Things just to get the pavement there, adding a ramp in there. There's a, a few other things that we have to look at as a district on what we're doing on those facilities. But getting it paved right now, uh, even if, I mean, it, it's need, needed to be paved for a while now. We've been dragging that on.
The reason that the other entrance was closed was the safety issue because cars are pulling out when the buses are trying to come down. Um, just in general, that is kind of a odd area to pull out onto Butler. You know, I mean, you know, I'm just saying there were studies done and that's why it was originally closed off.
Well, okay. When we're sitting up there on the buses and we're watching the students go out, they don't even care if that's an exit. Some of them have the big things. They go right over and I'm surprised somebody hasn't got hurt. That, I mean, with this one exit, it's a good idea. I think you should open up the other one.
Can you just remind me or someone can? I'm just trying to picture when I drive in, can someone be driving in and driving out at the same time? Or do you have to wait turns?
I mean, you can.
Kind of merit, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, it's
I added it to the list.
Yeah, it's definitely something that needs to be looked at. But again, entrances and, uh, exits aren't really going to impact the paving part of it, which we need, need to look at how we, the turnaround is, um, the, the use of, uh, the cul-de-sac coming up on the side there to turn around. It's, uh, up there. So there's a variety of, of things that need to be looked at, but they also impact other things. So it's, it's not something that's a quick fix right now. I think the paving part of it, uh, can be done and then still
Oh, it was nice to see it packed when I played, uh, girls volleyball and, you know, Riverview was in town. So, you know, they travel well.
Yeah.
And, uh, oh, yeah, I mean, there was no parking, obviously, but, uh, yeah, people thought. And it's like football is going to be up there. Football draws more than anything. And on that, I guess, with the, the money and the work we're doing with football, is there plans? I know there's ups and downs for this, for our stadium to be a site for playoff games. If we do put like the money, make, you know.
There's certain, there's certain requirements that the wood bill requires. Um, again, that's something that would have to be decided later on, whether that's something that we could do or not. But, uh, whether it's up there, down below, those are all decisions that will come into play later on. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I said we'll build a garage.
All right. If you pave that, you should check the same company that's doing the mills.
Is there a company doing the mills? Entertainer motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Any other questions, any other comments from the audience? Hearing none? Oh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Going to motion by Ms. Haas, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ecker. All in favor?
Hi.
Eyes have it. Opposed?